Is it?
No.
Yes, I wasn't talking into it then. I will be submitting my recommendation to staff within two weeks of this evening's hearing. The application will then be scheduled for deliberations before the county commissioners. If you wish to give testimony, I need you to fill out one of the sheets in the back. And when you come to the podium, please give your name and address for the record before you begin your testimony. If we have anybody on Zoom, we will get to you after we've taken the testimony from those who are in attendance. First, staff will introduce the application, then we will hear from the applicant. After the applicant's testimony, we will then get into the public comments sheets. We will hear from those who are in favor, those who are neutral, and then those who are opposed. The public not speaking will be read into the record. We will then give the applicant and/or their representative an opportunity for rebuttal of any testimony stated into the record from the public before we close the hearing. After that point, we will receive no further testimony. The time limits are thirty minutes for the applicant's presentation, five minutes for public testimony, and fifteen minutes for applicant rebuttal. I would ask that you direct all of your testimony to me and not to the audience. Are there any questions regarding this proceeding tonight? I think we have a room full of experienced folks. Okay, then let's begin tonight with case number MSP two one dash zero 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 two.
Thank you for your compliment, by the way. For the record, Vlad Finkel with Cootney County Community Development, as you have just stated, this is a request, case number MSP twenty one zero 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 two Humbert Acres. This is a request by Round Mountain LLC to develop a sixteen lot residential subdivision on approximately eighty acres. The subject parcel is located at the intersection of Scarsello and Riverview, I'm sorry, Ranchview Drive on the south side of Scarsello. As you can see, this is a rectangular, fairly level parcel of land that's heavily vegetated. And the applicant is requesting to create five or sixteen five acre parcels that would have access via an internal road that would be turned over to the Highway District. The subject parcel is zone rural, and as you know, rural zoning allows for parcels to be created as small as five acres in size. The comprehensive plan designation is country, and it does allow subdivisions to take place as being proposed with this request. The extension of Ranchview Drive will head south, this is facing north to your left. There will be a roundabout at the terminus of the road, however, based on the continuity requirements per our code, the applicant has provided an easement for the benefit of extending this road further south in the event there is development to the south of this parcel. Water supply will be provided via individual wells. The applicant is not proposing to have a water system constructed for this project or connect to an existing water system. All they are required to do with respect to individual wells is have a PG analysis stating that there is sufficient groundwater to provide a minimum of five gallons per minute flow for a period of forty-four hours and a minimum of fifteen hundred gallons per day flow. Effluent discharge will be treated via individual septic systems and drain fields. As you can see, and as I stated, the site is fairly flat. It does have a significant amount of vegetation. Based on the existing vegetation and pursuant to the county code, the applicant will be required to submit a wildfire mitigation plan prior to final plat approval. The wildfire mitigation plan has to be prepared by a professional in the field like a forester, and it has to be approved by the fire district with jurisdiction. Based on the agency comment period, we received responses from all the agencies that you can see on the slide. The responses are very general, there's nothing that is unique. The applicant will have to seek, or future property owners will have to seek building permits for all the structures on each individual lot. Lake Highway District has requested that the applicant enter into a subdivision conditional access agreement. And basically, it stipulates the impact fees associated with the development and the construction of the road that will be dedicated over, for the benefit of the public, to Lake's Highway District. Health Department has standard requirements in terms of the language that must be placed on the face of final plat, along with future permits for septic systems on each individual lot. Fire Department had similar comments in terms of access, street sign requirements. Fish and game, as they typically do, stated that there will be impact to wildlife, and they are requesting that wildlife-friendly language be included within the CCNRs to be recorded concurrently with the plat. Staff does have that as a condition of approval for your review and consideration. The Department of Environmental Quality provided a general statement in which they basically state that the applicant must comply with all air quality, water quality, and other state regulations in developing this project. And of course, the Idaho Department of Water Resources technically do not oversee water rights when it's individual wells. That threshold only comes into play when it's shared wells or community water systems. But they do have conservation, water conservation standards that they would like for us to apply in terms of the amount of irrigation that will be conducted on each lot. And we are proposing that as a condition of approval to be added to the CCNRs, along with the wildlife-friendly language. During the public comment period, we received three comments on the opposition. They were stemming from lack of groundwater supply, increasing traffic, and strain on public services such as schools, fire, and EMS. I don't, as a planner, reviewing this application and other similar projects, I don't have an issue with the first two because the applicant did submit a sufficient groundwater report that does address our requirements, and therefore, we don't believe it's an issue. Increasing traffic, of course, that's inevitable because of the density that's being created, and the Highway District did acknowledge that. However, the subdivision agreement that the applicant has to sign with the Highway District and the impact fees that they will pay per each lot should be reasonable to mitigate impacts associated with this request. Now, the last one, strain in public services, the only concern that we have seen thus far is with the schools. I have solicited comments on various major subdivision applications. And the Coeur d'Alene School Superintendent has stated that they have seen an influx of students within their school district. But unfortunately, and I, David, correct me if I'm wrong, there is no state law that mandates or has a mechanism to put a financial burden on the developer. It's all done on a voluntary basis. And some developers have either set aside land for future schools or they have contributed some impact fees based on the sale of each lot. Now, like I said, it's voluntary, so it's not required. And therefore, staff really did not force the issue in this request. But I just wanted to express that to you as one of the concerns that we have seen. Staff analysis, as I stated, they have to comply with all the agency requirements. They have met the minimum requirements of the code. They must construct all the subdivision infrastructure prior to final plat or provide a sufficient bond consistent with the code in terms of the, let me correct myself, a hundred fifty percent of financial bond for the improvements associated with the request to either the county or the agency with jurisdiction that will accept those improvements. Beyond that, I don't have any additional information to add unless you have any questions.
Not right now, thank you Vlad. Stephanie?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Blaylac, I'm a land use planner with Veritas. Our address is three nine oh six North Schreiber Way in Coeur d'Alene. And I also have Mike Paul here, who's a professional engineer in our office. And he's going to be handing out just a packet with three documents in it. One is my presentation, just so you can have it in front of you. And the other two, I will go over as I go through my presentation. Vlad did a very good job of explaining the project, so some of this, we'll just be reiterating it, but I think it's important. I'm not sure which button do I press, just this top one?
Okay. Oh.
Nope.
She can use the mouse, your mouse.
Or you can just, you'll know what I'm. I think we can go to the first slide. As Vlad stated, the Humbert Acres is sixteen lots. Each lot will be five gross acres in size and at least four point five net acres. The site is relatively flat, there's a little bit of elevation, as you can see, on the north end. This has the topo on it. The property is densely stocked, mostly pine trees and some dug for species mixed in. There are no wetlands on site. The proposed access road will be an extension of Ranchview Drive and will meet the Lake's Highway District standards for a public road. Each lot will access directly onto Ranchview Drive, there'll be no shared infra, or no shared driveways. This picture is taken standing on where Ranchview Drive will be constructed, looking north across Scarsello to the existing Ranchview Drive. There's the access for Elkhorn Ranch Estates. Next, I'd like to highlight the most applicable agency comment. The Lake's Highway District, the district provided a comment letter on September twentieth approving the subdivision request with conditions. A seventy-five hundred dollar per resident lot fee will be contributed to the Lake's Highway District by the development to address safety associated with increased traffic. The Lake's Highway District will use the funds towards future roadway and safety improvements. The Director Eric Shanley clarified by email on October eighteenth that the seventy-five hundred dollar per lot fee will address both roadway safety, speed, and capacity comments outlined in the comment letter. Those funds may be used toward the future construction of a turn lane, and you have that email in your packet. Effluent discharge on each lot will be treated by individual septic and drain field systems. Penandale Health had no objections since the lot are at least five gross acres in size. The Northern Lakes Fire District approved the proposed subdivisions with requirements, and we will submit a fire mitigation plan approved by the Northern Lakes Fire District with final plat. Again, Lakeland School District did express concerns with the growing population. Since there's no impact fees collected or land set aside for schools at this time, the developer would consider donating money to that, but there's just no avenue for it at this time. So, you know, we would have to work with the School District to figure out what that fee would look like. Idaho Fish and Game provided general considerations for residential development. These considerations will be placed in the CCNR since it is a condition of approval in the staff report. Stormwater runoff will be treated on site, and it will meet the county's code requirements. The water is provided by individual wells, and they will be drilled by the new lot owners. Tom Mullen did prepare a comprehensive groundwater report and a follow-up email. His email states that it's likely the sixteen individual wells will provide the minimum five gallons per minute and fifteen hundred gallons per day without affecting nearby wells. Tom Mullen is a professional geologist with Northwest Groundwater Consultants. This is a map of the surrounding area, and I also included this in your packet, just so you could see it a little bit clearer. But the map shows the surrounding area zoomed out, one and a half miles to the north and one mile to the east. There are several five acre platted and unplatted parcels in the proximity. This map outlines the five acre parcel subdivisions in red. And it clearly shows Humbert Acres fits in well with rural character and neighborhood and would not negatively impact the nature and appearance of this rural area. In conclusion, there'll be no phasing for Humbert Acres, everything will be constructed at one time. Proposed residential subdivision does comply with the country designation in the comprehensive plan, and it is consistent with the development in the surrounding area. That does conclude my presentation, do you have any questions?
Excuse me, so this developer will do land development but not build the homes?
No.
Lots will be sold?
Yes.
Okay. And what's the contemplated method of handling mail?
That's not really something we've looked into, but my guess is since it's only sixteen lots, it'll just be, and they're five acre lots, they'll probably just have mailboxes out front.
And how about waste, you know, garbage?
They should have a garbage service.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think I have anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, do you, okay. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak at this time? If so, just unmute yourself. Apparently not.
All right, then that concludes our hearing on MSP twenty one dash zero 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 two for this evening. Thank you very much. And now we will go to case number CUP two one dash zero 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 six.
I don't think the clicker likes Stephanie, but that's okay. Once again. It's working. Once again, for the record, Vlad Finkel with Cootney County Community Development. As you just stated, this is a request by Avista, formerly Washington Water Power Company, for the approval of wireless communication facility, specifically a sixty foot tall monopole tower for the sole benefit of Avista and their seven hundred megahertz private network system. The subject property is located on Hutter Road north of I ninety. It is currently zoned agricultural, and it has an existing Avista power substation located on it. It does have an existing CUP that approved the power substation as well. As you can see, this slide is facing north, and it shows the subject property in question with the power substation and the subdivision within the city limits of City of Coeur d'Alene directly to the north. The area to the east and to the south is currently vacant. There is a trail directly to the south of this site as well. As I stated, the subject property is located in the agricultural zone, and it's within the border comp plan designation. The property itself is located within the city of Coeur d'Alene area of city impact, and it abuts City of Post Falls area of city impact to the west. With this request, the applicant is also requesting a variance to the setback requirements for this specific use. Specifically pursuant to section eight five, one thirty, one three two Wireless Communication Facility subsection two, it states that all wireless communication facilities must be set at least three hundred feet from any existing residential structure, which in this case, the proposed location of this tower being directly south of the substation will meet that requirement with the development to the north and development to the west. However, setbacks, subsection B states, "All wireless communication facilities shall be set back one hundred fifty feet from any, from the boundary of any parcel located within the agricultural suburban restricted residential or high-density residential." I'd like to point out that staff made an error and would like to clear it up that the staff report states highway density residential, it should be high-density residential. It's just an oversight on my part, and I apologize for that. But the intent of this setback, in staff's view, is to create a separation buffer between residential parcels in the area. What the code doesn't contemplate is when you have a site located next to city limits, it doesn't acknowledge the zoning classification of the subject city. So, in my review of the City of Coeur d'Alene zoning classification area, it's R eight. And so, in my view, we cannot overlook that setback requirement from a residential development or residential zoning classification, even if it's outside of the county jurisdictional boundaries, even if it's within the incorporated cities, city limits of City of Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, or any other city. So, staff immediately contacted applicant and stated that they would need to seek a variance in that regard. Based on the information that the applicant submitted, we agree that there is limited space on site, and based on the existing residential development to the north, location of the power station, as well as development to the west, and future development directly to the east that's likely under construction at this time, there's really nowhere else to place this structure other than where it's being proposed. And it's proposed on the southern tip of this parcel. I do have a site plan here. As you may know, a sixty foot monopole tower is, has, is exempt from having to comply with the colocation requirements, as well as a two mile separation from any other wireless communication facility in the area. Considering these exemptions, we believe that the applicant's request to deviate from the setback requirements from a residential parcel adjacent to it is appropriate. And we believe that the application should be approved with a variance. Otherwise, there's nowhere else you could locate this, even if you were to pursue it to the north of the substation or west, it would then be in violation of the three hundred foot separation from any adjoining residential structure. Does that, does that help? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
I got it.
One of the questions that did arise during the review process is whether or not the proposed Hutter Corridor would, or the proposed use would interfere with the proposed location of the Hutter Corridor right of way. While the final location has not been fully vetted, the approximate location of it, as you can see based on this zoomed in aerial overlay, will run directly adjacent to the subject parcel. And it will be actually, the, the structure itself will be actually further away than the power substation itself. And as you can see, based on the development to the north, there are residential structures that are much closer to the proposed Hutter Corridor right of way. I must add that based on the, these are, these are the photos, or this is the rendering of the proposed structure, as well as photo simulations. But I must add that the building official has reviewed this application and determined that this type of structure will not require any building permits. Therefore, we don't have any way to condition the approval of this permit to have the ITD official and the applicant vet through or confirm the location of the structure with a building permit. We just hope that they communicate and have an understanding of whether or not the proposed location of the monopole would interfere with the, with the corridor right of way itself. I must add that based on the proposed draft corridor language, there will be a hundred foot overlay buffer adjoining the right of way on both sides of the Hutter Corridor. It's likely that the tower will be within that hundred foot buffer. We would suggest that the Avista officials contact ITD and dialogue with them to see whether or not there is any, any coordination that will be required in terms of placement of that structure. As you can see, the remaining agencies did not have any issues. They had a standard set of conditions or recommendations. There is an existing access to the site for the power station, power substation. Therefore, it will serve this monopole as well. They need to get a permit from Idaho Department of Water Resources to irrigate the landscaping. They are proposing significant amount of landscaping surrounding the monopole tower, as well as the perimeter fence that will enclose all of the equipment associated with the tower. They are proposing, I believe, a bench next to the trail itself. So actually, once it's developed, it will actually, you know, create a very pleasant environment for people to, you know, walk along the trail and even take a break. We received only one comment in opposition, so there was very little in public involvement, simply because it's a very short, by comparison, a very short monopole benefiting solely the Avista's network. Based, based on the findings of fact and the information that we have received from the applicant, we support the applicant's request as long as they comply with all of the agency requirements. And therefore, I don't have anything else to add except for I can clarify some of the findings perhaps on the, on the variance proposal, if you need me to. But I do stand for any questions that you may have at this time.
Well done Vlad, I don't have any questions right now. Lexi?
Hello, my name is Lexi Lucassen with Avista Utilities, or Avista Corporation, and I'm the applicant on behalf of our Communications Engineering Department. And I believe I have at least two engineers called into Zoom as well, so if there's any technical questions, they'd be happy to answer those as well. So we are proposing this sixty foot monopole for our smart meter communication. So meters that attach to houses instead of having a meter reader go out and take the readings on it. These meters would provide real-time data, and so if there was an outage or anything like that, we would know right away. So we could respond quicker and have more accurate billing information as far as usage and stuff like that. So, I believe that we already have a few of these communication towers in place throughout our service territory, but we're looking to expand. And so, this Hutter Substation provided great coverage in the area, and the substation was also selected because a lot of our infrastructure is already there. So the parcel is already in use for electrical utilities, and so just adding this communication utility to the public, we hope, is a smaller impact to kind of condense all of our infrastructure onto the same parcel. So putting the tower next to the substation also allows us to tie into the fiber optic or infrastructure that's already there. And visually, there's already lots of transmission poles of similar height to the structure, so hopefully visually it will blend in. We are in discussions of camouflaging the pole, although that's not proposed at this time. I spoke with the engineers yesterday, and they said that they are looking into it. And if that was requested by the community or by the commission, that we could look into that as well. So, the self-supporting tower would be unmanned within a six foot locked chain link fence. So, would just be access for regular maintenance, inspection, repair, stuff like that. As Vlad mentioned, it would have significant landscaping, basically a wall of trees between our parcel and the new subdivision going into the east. And so hopefully that would create a wall, a visual barrier, as well as there'll be a site obstructing wall between the trail and the tower and a picnic bench, a significant landscaping all around. So, we will coordinate with IDWR on irrigation water for that as well. The frequency that the tower will use is a seven hundred megahertz. Avista privately owns this network, and that swath is commonly used for communications, such as any emergency communication, stuff like that. So Avista just owns its own frequency, and it would communicate on that with all of our other communications. We will also be happy to contact ITD and work with that. We can move the structure a few feet in any direction. But I haven't seen specifics of where they might like it to go, so we will reach out to them before that happens. And, yeah, we just ask that this be approved on behalf of Avista and also for the benefit of our customers to get more accurate and real-time data as far as energy consumption. So, yeah, are there any questions?
When you speak of camouflage- When you speak of cam- camouflage, what does, what form does that take?
Yeah, so this would actually be the first time that we ever implemented that on a pole, but I um Vlad mentioned you can paint it green to just kind of blend in with the trees or um, you know, they make uh like it could look like a clock tower or a um, you know, a fake branches to look like a tree, something like that, so um I believe that there's several different options.
Okay. All right, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We have no public present for comments. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Anyone on Zoom that would like to speak to this matter, please unmute yourself and go right ahead. Hearing none, I believe we're okay to proceed.
Then that concludes our hearing this evening for case number CUP two one dash zero 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 six. Thank you very much and good evening. Goodbye.